Thank you everybody for coming tonight and welcome you to our board number 18. My name is Joanne Dean and I am the president of the JHS PTO. And next to me is Melissa Rhodes, she is our treasurer. And we have moderated many of these forums in the past. We had a really good response from the community and many, many questions were submitted. We will ask the questions and take turns by calling out the candidates' names and ask that each candidate keep the answers between one and two minutes so we can get through as many questions as possible. All of these questions are questions from the community, they are not questions that came from myself or Melissa, just so you know. And Melissa's going to start with her first.
Okay, her first question, would you please introduce yourself and tell us why you decided to run for school board, including what makes you qualified to serve on Jamestown School Board? And we will start with John.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here, I love the process. The reason that I'm running for school board is I believe I have experience in so many areas that can help our district. I started off teaching at the kindergarten and sixth grade level. I went from that to dean of students and a principalship. And I also was the director of pupil services at Chautauqua Lake School and middle grades' principal. And then in Jamestown, I was also the director of pupil services and then the director of human resources. Early on, I started in Jamestown as a paraprofessional back in the 1980s. And as a paraprofessional, I would go to the Y with students with disabilities and help them so that they could go swimming. So with that background, going to meetings for 20 years, board meetings, I know a lot of the issues, how those issues were handled, working on budgets, and working alongside with the unions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move it to Paul.
I've told this story 100 times, the reason I originally ran for the board, I had written an article, and it was actually in Time Magazine, I remember that specifically, about No Child Left Behind. And what got me thinking about, although 100% great idea in President Bush's administration and his education chair, it was a noble thought, but what it got me thinking about when I sort of ran in between the lines with the articles, I wanted to make sure that wasn't, what wasn't lost in that was that every child wasn't pushed to be their best, not just about leaving children behind, but making sure that every kid was getting the best opportunities they could. So that is initially why I ran for the board. I had attended some meetings for about a year, just to sort of get a feel for what it was about. And, you know, what I have found being on the board, a lot about my career with the Jamestown Police Department is that the problem solving isn't dissimilar, it's certainly not, you know, you have more time to think about the things that are going on in school board. But I'm used to dealing with conflict and problems and working through things. And I'm from Jamestown, so I was, I've always been passionate about our district. And in my position as commander at the police department, I'm used to dealing with a lot of labor issues. I was actually sent to the FBI National Academy, one of the courses I took there was in labor law, so it has been helpful as a board member. I spent 26 years in a union while also, you know, again, taking labor law classes and now sitting on the management side of the table, if you will. So I've got a lot of experience, I think, on both sides of the table. And the reason I continue to be on this board is that the one thing I have found throughout this district with our teachers, our staff, our board, our administration is that everybody, it feels like everybody's here for the right reason and that's for the kids.
Thank you.
Two minutes, huh? I began my education career as a student here in Jamestown. I'm a graduate of the high school, my mother graduated from the high school, my grandparents graduated from the high school. So several generations of us, my four children have all graduated from the high school. And now I have five grandchildren in school here. Two of them live with me. They are in kindergarten and first grade, so I'm fairly busy with the two little ones. My professional career included several years with Hospice Chautauqua County where I was director of development and coordinator of volunteers. Then I went on to work at Loughlin of Lakewood. I was their assistant administrator for a year and then I became the administrator there for the last 12 years that I worked. I ran a large budget that I was responsible for, so I had some experience with budgeting that I've used in my school board work. I also was in charge of a fairly large staff. I began everything in PTA many years ago. I was PTA president at Fletcher. I went on to become the southwestern district director for the state PTA. I was then their membership chairman, their public relations chairman, and that followed I was a vice president. Quite a while ago, I got elected to the board for the first time. The reason I ran was because there was an open seat on the board. And in my position as chairman of the homeschool community advisory board, many of the board members had become acquainted with me. So they came to me and asked me to run. And after quite a bit of consideration, I decided it was something I wanted to do, so I ran and I got elected. I then served 25 years on the board. I left the board for a while and I've been back now for six years. In addition to that, I'm the area three director for the New York State School Board Association and I'm their second vice president. That means as area director that I'm responsible for the school boards in Chautauqua, Catarcas, Allegheny, and St. Ben counties. I don't like talking about myself, so this is, this is kind of difficult, but I'm more than willing to let you know what I have done that I think I bring to this board. The reason I decided to run again is that the last few years, we've been through a lot here in Jamestown. A lot in this state and a lot in the country. We went through COVID and now we're going through recovery. And the recovery isn't done. We've made a lot of moves to help the students adjust and get back to where they ought to be. We're not there yet. So there's a lot more work to be done and a lot more that we need to do, and I feel I have a lot to contribute to that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
That's a hard act to talk. Melissa Paternetti, the reason that I chose to run for Jamestown Public School Board is because I've been back in the area since 2019. I've been attending city council meetings weekly, learning a lot about the city, the way it runs, have come to a couple of board meetings. And the main reason that I would like to get on the school board is so that I can have my voice heard, so that I can be that avenue for parents that, you know, don't understand how the board works, or try to, try to teach people in the community how, how, how to get, you know, things to the board. Or also, you know, one of the things people might say is that I don't have children, but I have a lot of children. I have many children in the area that I am friends with their, you know, their parents. And I feel like I could be an advocate. I've been a huge advocate for not only my mother since I was seven years old, but for many people in the community. And since moving back to Jamestown, I feel that I've grown up a lot. I drove for Uber and Lyft in Austin, Texas, which taught me a lot of, a lot of stuff about a lot of different things. And coming back to the area, I have seen, you know, that like this area is not what it used to be, you know? And, and school is different, especially during COVID. During COVID, my friend Stacy Tanner had her kids and she had to work, so she asked me to help with her kids during that, you know, that time. And seeing the kids struggle with that online was, was, was very detrimental to them. And I would, I would like to be a voice for, for the kids, for the future of the city of Jamestown. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see yourself as a role model and how? We'll start with Paul.
It's a little uncomfortable to think of yourself as a role model. I will say that, you know, I've always tried to pattern myself in a manner that my own kids could respect and look up to. I think if I've been a role model, it's been in the sense of volunteering, caring about what happens in my community. I volunteered, I've been volunteer coaching since, I'd have to do the math, probably around the year 2000. I've coached dozens of youth soccer teams over the years, couple of softball teams. I was on the board for Jays and I've been on this school board since 2008. You know, and in my career, I always did things by the book. You know, again, I'm uncomfortable with the phrasing of role model, but, you know, yeah, I've always, I've always wanted to, you know, I suppose because you do things that you want your kids to be able to respect you and look up to you, it just sort of by default, maybe it happens with other people. So, that's a really uncomfortable question.
It's okay. You answered it.
Yeah, so, so, you know, yeah, I do think I've, you know, I've conducted myself in a, in a manner that, that I respect myself and I think others respect me, so I guess it would be for others to decide if I was a role model.
Christine?
This is a tough question. However, I hope that people look at me as someone who knows what they're doing and who thinks about what they're doing and works hard for the school system and for the community. But when we talk about role models, I'm going to tell you a story of the two little ones that live with me. I hope that I'm setting good examples for them because I am their example. I think I set good examples for my children because they have all turned out to be wonderful adults, willing to help me, willing to help others who need help. However, one day when I was leaving for a school board meeting, the two little ones came running out on the porch after me and as I got almost to the car, they said, Grandma, go be the change. And that, that said a lot to me, that they really expect me to go and do my job and do what I'm supposed to do for other people. So that's what I intend to do. Whether or not I'm a role model, we all hope the people like us, but we all realize that not everybody does. But I try to set a good example and I will continue to try to do that.
Thank you. Missy?
All right. I've been sitting here waiting since Paul and I'm thinking, okay, well, what do I say? One of the things that, that happened to me while I was a student at Jamestown Public Schools is that I ran into some pretty great role models. And, and as you're growing as a kid, those are the people that you want in your life. I think that, that being a role model for young kids, adults, I mean, you don't have to be only a role model to adult, or to children, but you can also be a role model to adults. And just, you know, teaching people different things. And I, and I, one thing that was always told to me is that if you don't learn something new each day, you didn't live that day to the fullest. And I lived my life like that. I try to learn something new every day. If it's not something that I hear, it's something that I read, or something that I talk about. I love having those conversations with people about different things because we all have different opinions, we all come to the table with different, you know, different ways that we not only lived our life, but my biggest role model in my life was Kathy Stedman at JCC, she was my volleyball coach. And she taught me many, many different ways to, to, to help not only myself, but to teach me how to be a role model to others. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I do believe that I'm a role model in the community. I'm active in, I was active in Striders and that, there was a typo in the paper that said I'm in Strider, I'm in the Striders now, I'm not actively doing that, but I was. I coached presently and in the past many sports in Jamestown and while I was in the military. I retired as an educator. I had a disability that I recovered from and went back to school to get educated. I'm a parent, a grandparent. And when I go out to dinner, one of the greatest things is when my wife and I are eating and a young person comes up to me who I do not seem to know and says thank you for the times that we had in the classroom when I was teaching and as an administrator. And then I have to say to them, please tell me your name again because you've grown. So I, and the thing that's most important out of all, close to the top, is that I'm extremely active at church.
Thank you. How do you handle conflict resolution? And if possible, please provide an example of a past experience with this. And we'll start with Chris.
I think the best way to handle conflict resolution is to be calm and let both sides of the issue be heard and really listen to them. Because often when you listen to both sides, you find that there is some commonality. And if you can start working with the commonality and work out to what they're disagreeing on, it often helps. Tough question.
We got some great questions.
And you want an example?
If you have one.
Well, I can give you an example of years ago, I was going to PTA conventions. And the first year I went to a workshop on active parenting. And I came home all gung ho, going to be really active parenting my kids. The next year I went to a workshop on watching television that talked about the harmful effect of television on kids and how to do, be selective in what you were choosing. So I came home and made all four of my children select a couple of programs a week and we really stuck to this for a while. The following year, I went to a workshop on conflict resolution. And when I came home, my kids said, what'd you do this year, Mom? I said, well, I went to a workshop on conflict resolution. And their response was, thank God, finally something we can use. So, so, you know, I think I've been dealing with people and conflict in many ways for many years. And I just think the best thing to do is stay calm, listen, and work hard resolution.
Missy?
All right. It's a good question. So, me and, me and I don't have all of the education that all the rest of the folks on the, that are running. I do have a degree at JCC and, and I'm very, I'm very much into area sports and going to games. One of the things I learned this last couple of years is that I, I tried a couple of things and I learned a lot. I learned a lot that not, not, not everybody's going to have the same opinion, not everybody's going to have the same way that they do things. And that conflict resolution is so important because if it's not, if it's not taken care of the correct way, it could, it could cause some damage to a lot of people. I tried to get involved with some things that weren't meant for me, unfortunately, but it's all a learning experience. Because I feel like if you can't make a mistake and you can't learn from that mistake and grow as a person, then, then I'm not really sure, you know, how we grow, how we grow as people. I always said I was going to be the smartest person by the time I was 40, but I think that by the time I'm 50, hopefully I will be. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
As a security police officer in the United States Air Force, I worked on de-escalation training quite often. That was one of our primary trainings. Also, in Jamestown Public Schools, I trained teachers in paras, conflict resolution. And two quick stories. One story is a story about a young man that was at Chautauqua Lake School and he busted up a wall and he came in and his dad was red hot that he was going to be suspended. And his father wanted a piece of him. We scheduled a meeting for the next day. I talked to the father prior to him coming in and I found out that the young man's mother was in a car accident and didn't know who he was and didn't know who his father was. The following weekend, I took them fishing, the father and the son. To this day, when I see them, they come up to me and would like to talk. We worked it out between myself and the father and the son and the mother did recover and now knows both of them. And the other quick story is a story about a young man at Purcell School, a student with a disability who was really struggling. The principal, Mr. Camerata, called me, asked me for help as the director of pupil services. I went over and talked to Mr. Camerata and the counselor and talked to the student and found out that the student was really big on wanting to be a veteran in the United States Air Force. I gave that young man my father's World War II helmet and got a letter from his parents. And we worked that, that situation out. And my understanding, after talking to Mr. Camerata, is that he came around and he was doing well.
Great, thank you. Paul?
My career, of course, has taught me how to handle conflict, conflict resolution. To get into the specifics of it, when you're a patrol officer, that is literally what your day is most of the time, is going around and resolving conflicts, whether it's a domestic violence situation. Sometimes it gets, it can get, and that's pretty serious, but one of the things I did at the Jamestown Police Department was I was a member of the crisis negotiations team. I was sent to training through the FBI for that. I later became the commander of the conflict resolution team. So, I, you know, I, I don't want to give specific examples in that case because there's, you know, just a certain ethical limits to that. I'm not going to tell the stories of terrible things that other people went through, but I've been there at their worst moments. So, you know, where the wrong word or the wrong movement even could, could send things in a, in a very drastic wrong direction. So, if that has done anything for me, as being a member of the, of the school board, the president of the school board, is that we do have the luxury of time here, there's never, it's never quite that serious in any given moment. I would certainly be selling myself short if I didn't talk about the fact that I am the father of what was once two teenage daughters, getting ready for school at the same time. So, there's some natural conflict resolution. That was probably some of the less successful conflict resolution that I've had in my life. But if any of this, if, what any of this has taught me is that you try to get the emotion out of, out of the situation and get it down to what, what are we really here about? What is this conflict actually about? When people are worked up and emotional about things, it's hard to sit through. It's, when, it's sort of, you know, when you're yelling, you don't really hear what people are saying, you're just, you just hear the yelling. So...
20 more seconds.
You know, the, the specific example, we were having a problem with a principal at Jamestown High School and I dove right into it, I met with, I went right to the high school, I met with the staff there, myself and the vice president, Mr. Schlegel, it's just as a means of trying to get to the problem and solve it.
Thank you. How would you help encourage Jamestown Public School graduates to stay in Jamestown to teach? I hear the interview process is unpleasant, how can we change this? Start with Melissa. Definitely a two-part question.
Definitely a two-part question. This is one of the things that I, I've talked about a lot since deciding to run for the board, that a lot of people leave Jamestown after they graduate. They go to school and they don't come back. And I graduated in 1993, 30 years ago, and that was the beginning, I think, of when people really started to move away and not come back. I really think that if it's an unpleasant interviewing situation, then it definitely needs to come to the table to have discussions on what is the process? How can you make it more inviting to people? How can you make it more well-known to the community that there are jobs available? I think a lot of times, people think we have to know someone to get into the Jamestown Public Schools. And I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what people believe, that if you don't know someone, you're not going to get a job. So if, if that's the stigma, then maybe that's what we need to change.
Thank you. We'll go with John next.
Can we repeat the question again?
Absolutely. How would you help encourage Jamestown Public Schools graduates to stay in Jamestown to teach? And the second part of that is that they, the interview process is unpleasant and how can that be changed?
Well, in order to talk to our students who are leaving to go in, go to college, and I know that we have done this because I was in human resources, we're, we're looking at ways that the, the state or the government, or the city would be giving something out to go into education. There's, there's certain things out, ways to get money out there through scholarships and things like that, where you may not have to pay back or it's a monthly payment to pay for your tuition, things like that to go into education. I do know that in the past, I went to teach recruitment. I, I do know that Human Resources is doing that, it was in the newspaper recently, to try to get students to come into Jamestown to be teachers and especially those that are, that are from Jamestown. I think it's critical that we sell Jamestown and they keep that good collaboration and communication with the city of Jamestown, with the mayor and the city council, and so that they see it connect, so the district and the city are more like one unit, not separate. And I'm not saying that we are separate, we've worked very well with the city to try to help out any way we can and they've done the same. But we need to continue doing that. And as far as the interview process, the interview process is made to be difficult because it's a difficult job. We need to make sure that our teachers are going to be able to handle the rigor of teaching students. And that's why the process is difficult. And it's one of the hardest jobs, I think, on the planet, is to work with students.
20 seconds.
So I, I think it's, it's really important that we get them ready for the interview process through college, but once they come to interview with us, we need to make sure that we're hiring the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
I think the way to encourage JHS students to stay here, I think you have to look at it in a broader sense of making sure that all of our students are seen, kind of behind the curtain. I think when you're, you know, in high school, it's hard to see the path to get from where you are right now to, to a career that you might aspire to. I think there's means of doing that where we talk them through it. I agree with John in the sense that I don't think we want, we don't want to lower the bar. I don't want the interview process to be easy. We do want our teaching staff scrutinized, we want to make sure that we're getting good people. But what you do is you prepare them for that. You know, send them through, maybe there's a way we could get them through mock interviews or, or just, you know, I, I don't want a feeling that we are blindsiding anybody with, with something in our interview process, but, you know, prepare them for the, for the rigor of it so that they're ready to step in, into a classroom. You know, maybe we could do things like mock interviews. And I think, I think if we tell more of our success stories in Jamestown schools, one of the things I've proposed in the past is, you know, through the website, being someone from this community, you hear about these, these great kids that are coming out of our district and doing wonderful things, you know, doctors and lawyers and scientists and teachers and, and, you know, law enforcement at every level. You know, I think we need to, to get it out there and show that, you know, number one, we have a lot in our district, there are things that you could do here that you can't do in other districts. We have offerings that other districts don't have. And we have a lot of success stories that we just need to... And we have a lot of success stories that we just need to tell so that so that we pull back the mystery of, that there isn't a mystery to it. That if you just, if you put in the effort and work hard, we're just going to help show you the roadmap to get you there.
Thank you.
Boy, all of what I said.
Would you like to add anything?
I will, I will add to that, that a couple of things we could do to encourage our young people that go into teaching is make sure that this is a good place to work. Make sure that our staff are happy, that they're working well together and that they show that to our students. I think in some cases, they do already, but there's there's work to be done in that area. We need to be sure that our our teachers in particular are treated well and are happy with the job they have. That they don't feel overworked, they don't feel unsupported, they feel like we're behind them. So I think that's the first step. Because once the kids see that kind of camaraderie in the staff, it helps them want to be there. The interview process, I don't know all that much about it. But if it's that tough, maybe one of the things we could do is let them know what to expect before they get here. Give them a list of what we're going to ask them to do. Not the questions, but a list of, we're going to ask you to teach a mock class, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. You're going to first be interviewed by such and such, and then perhaps a second interview with another group. But at least give it to them ahead of time so they can prepare for that. I hear a lot about other places that are offering tuition forgiveness if student, if teachers come in and teach for a number of years. One of them I know is in Boston because I have a cousin that did it. Once she graduated, she was offered a job there and she had to teach, I believe, for five years to get her tuition forgiven. And she did that. We could begin to look for creative ways to finance something like that for young people coming into the teaching profession.
So this question is, what do you see as the greatest opportunities and challenges in the district? How would you try to build on these opportunities or conquer these challenges? And I will start with Paul.
Give me.
You're good.
Opportunities. I think I touched on it a little bit. The greatest opportunities we have, we have more class offerings. We have a lot of extracurricular activities. We have a very knowledgeable staff of teachers that our students have access to. You know, I really believe someone can, and really the initial reason about, you know, making sure every kid excels. I don't think there are any limits for a student who goes through Jamestown Schools. You know, I think our greatest challenge is the homes. What what our kids are coming into school with, you know, with what's happening in their lives outside of of the schools. You know, we only have them in our buildings for, you know, six, seven hours a day, five days a week, 185 days a year. So I'm not going to do the math, but so much of what they go through at home, of course, has a huge influence on on their success and how they're how they're doing in school. So and and one of the things I think that is important that we've done over the last couple of years, you know, Dr. Whitaker introduced the community navigators. We've added more social workers. So, you know, I think we are improving. You know, we as a board are constantly analyzing what what we could, what could be doing better. And we ask for results. We don't, and not abstract results like our community navigators are doing great and our social workers are really helping people. You know, we ask for concrete numbers. How many people are you talking to? How many homes are you going into? I think those are the things that we have to continue to look at and try to improve on.
Thank you. Missy? Paul? You're okay.
I actually agree with with Paul. I think one of the biggest challenges for the schools, and I worked for a short period of time at Bush After School Program, and the relationship between the parents and the teachers, it's a it's a struggle for the the teachers to to get the parents in the school, especially for that time period with COVID. You know, COVID made it where parents weren't allowed to come into the schools. And and another thing is, is that we do have a lot of kids that are living in homes that some of them aren't even habitable, you know, and and we have to be concerned with that. The low to moderate income family is a large portion of our children in our school district. And it's concerning. One of the, one of the things that I did in the time period from when I got my petition signed, you know, I did some research and I talked to some people. And and the lead poisoning is a huge issue in our school district. You know, 60 out of the 80% of the, 60 out of 80 of the kids are in the Jamestown Public Schools. And and it's it's a, at a very young age, you know, so it's not always the the school's, you know, responsibility to make sure that lead poisoning gets out of the homes. But the 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 teaching and the 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 struggles that the school has to go through to 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 help with the teaching of these kids that do have lead poisoning. One of the things that I ran into when I was circulating my petition was the concern of the public schools, not Jamestown Public Schools not having enough services for kids with, that are on the spectrum. And and that's one of the things that I would like to look at, to bring to the table and and ask the questions of what is being done right now and what more can we do? I think the great opportunity, I think we have great opportunities. I think there's so many more sports coming out. The girls' flag football, I think, is great. It's exciting. Having the Purcell and Washington track being done is, I think, a huge accomplishment. Thank you.
Chris?
Okay. The pros here, the things that are that are good and that are attractive in this district are sports, music, advanced courses, and diversity. Those are all pluses for us. Our teaching staff is a big plus for us, people who really care. The cons, I will start with diversity. And I will go on to say poverty and society itself are the biggest detravels in our district. Everybody's talked a little bit about some of that. But I don't think any of us in this room can even imagine some of the things that the students here go through at home. Some of them don't have homes. I know that there are high school students who are not living in a home. They're living on the street or in a car. Many of them are not living with family. They're living with a friend or whatever. The reason we've looked at this and we continue to look at it and will do more is we realize how many more social workers we need, how many more psychologists we need. And we also realize that we need to do a lot of partnering, partnering with other organizations that offer services to these kids. And we need to be able to bring parents in and help them. I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that. I know that when I go and stand in front of a school every day waiting for my two kids to come out and I look around at the parents who are standing there, it's small wonder that we have some problems. We have people who, when they're putting their kids in the car, don't know enough to put them in the side away from traffic. They're taking them out to the middle of the street and then putting them in. They're, they need help. It's not that they're bad people. It's that nobody's told them or helped them know how to do things. Those are things that our PTOs could work on. And the school board would certainly be happy to help with anything we could do with parents. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I think the district has an opportunity. And within that opportunity, there's a bit of a challenge. The state has given a 16.5% increase. I'm glad to see that the board is looking to the future to put some of that aside so that we don't have to go out and borrow money and pay high interest. At the same time, we have to figure out what to do with the the rest of the money. And as Ms. Spies said in the newspaper, she talked about maintaining and increasing support to our teachers. So that goes along a little bit with what Chris is talking about. If you look at the scores that Jamestown Public School has and you look at the report card over the last period of time, say, 10 years, and you look to see if there's increases in each of the areas. I think that for me, I would like to have discussion about how we get those scores up and what we need to do to support the teachers so that they have good morale while they're in the classroom, working with them. But they need assistance, especially after COVID. And I hope that some of the funds go towards supporting that and supporting them.
In your opinion, what should the role of parents or guardians and families be in the Jamestown Public School District? John, I'll start with you.
Okay. Thank you. I think the role of parents and guardians are to be a team player along with the teachers, the administrators, the board, to support their children so that they can get the best education needed. Sometimes that means going to meetings and being active when needed, as much as needed, to help their child or children while they're in the district. To come to meetings if needed, to ask questions of their administrators, their teachers, the board if needed. So I think communication and collaboration is going to be very important for parents and guardians of the children.
Thank you. Paul?
You know, the role I see parents and guardians playing is is partners. Kind of goes back to our last question about with what our students are dealing with at home. You know, we need parents who are engaged, who are advocates, both primarily for their their student, but but also for the district. They need to invest in their children's education. And I don't mean a financial investment. I mean, you know, an emotional investment, a time investment, an informed investment. Know what is here for your kids. Know what struggles they're having, know what successes they're having. You know, look at all the opportunities that that are out there for them. We've just got to make sure that we do everything we can to to get them engaged because that, again, as I said before, we only get them for 180 days a year. What's happening at home is is so important. And it's so important that the the parents and guardians care about what their kids are getting out of the district.
Great, thank you. Missy? In your opinion, what should the role of parents and guardians and families be within the district?
In my opinion, they should be partners, but we need to invite them to be partners. Couple of things we're doing that I'm really pleased about is that this week, everybody in the district's reading Charlotte's Web. And the nice thing about that is that parents are getting involved and sitting down with their children in the evening and reading to them or listening to them read. We did this last year with another book. I think that helps parents become more interested and more aware of what's going on. In addition to that, I think that we need to work again with our PTOs and help them engage parents in their building. The example I'll give you is there was a building in this district that had a large student population but was about to disband its parents group completely because they couldn't get anybody to do anything. There were eight women who were coming to meetings. Nobody else was doing anything. They got a new president and the new president said to them, we need to see what we can do to increase the number of people doing things. So they sent home a letter and said, this is what your PTO is doing for the children in this building. And they listed everything that was going on. And then on the opposite side, they listed all the jobs that were available for parents to help. And there were a lot of them, some big, some very small. And they sent the letter home. They got 400 responses. So then the tough work began because they realized that they had to call each one of those people and give them something to do. And what ended up happening is that that parents group grew and grew and grew. And I'm sure that that benefited the children in that building. So there are things like that that can be done. But I also think that when, we got to work a little harder on making our buildings a little more welcoming to parents. I mean, right now, I think most parents feel like they can't come in unless they're invited one-on-one. And now everybody has to show a driver's license to get in during the day. I understand that's important for safety. But I think for a parent to feel like they're shut off from their child is not a real good thing. So we need to work on that. I know there are ways we can do it without a brainstorm and come up with some ideas.
Thank you. Missy?
Great. Okay. So not being a parent, this is kind of a hard question for me because I don't have that experience of what it's like to get kids up in the morning and send them off to school and the the hustle and bustle of the working family, the single mother. I think that one of the 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 largest things that in our community is we do have a lot of single parents. Single parents that, you know, have to be to work at 8 o'clock. And I I think that one of the things that the school district has done well is serving the breakfast in the morning. I think that, you know, it it makes it very comfortable for for parents that they can know that they get to, their kid gets to go into the school and that they get to have a balanced meal. And I think one of the things that that I've noticed from, you know, listening to angry parents on Facebook or, you know, the the outlets that parents have nowadays are way different than way back in the day when there wasn't Facebook, where someone could say, well, Jamestown Public School this. You know, like that that stakeholdership that these parents could feel, having a partnership, like you said, and you said, with the teachers, with the coaches, you know, with everyone that works at Jamestown Public Schools. I think that, you know, teaching the parents that the school is always open. It doesn't matter if you aren't invited, that you can come to the school. You have to come to the office, just like everyone else. You know, if you want to get in the school or the mayor wants to get in the school, they all have to do it the same way. So I think that, you know, just letting people know that it's an open door policy is 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 a huge item.
Thank you. What specific steps would you take as a board member to improve transparency and make school district information more widely available? I will start with Chris.
Right now, I think we are fairly transparent. I mean, if people can come to a board meeting and they can ask questions and we'll do our best to get them answered. There are a number of things I suppose we could do. I mentioned it in what I sent back to the teachers. One thing we could do is is our president could do a monthly newsletter to parents. Brief, to the point, it could, it could, I would hopefully have it mailed because I'm not sure that all of our parents have access to email. We could try that. We could try having a one meeting a month, an hour of social time before the meeting, where people could come and talk to us and just sit and have conversation. You know, there are a lot of different things we could try. The problem is getting us there to try them. And it's important that the community feels they can come to us and that we are transparent and open. But it's also important for the community to understand that there's some things we cannot be transparent about. We cannot discuss individual students. We cannot discuss individual personnel. We just simply can't do it. But if there's a broader scope question they want answered, they're more than welcome to come and we'll be glad to discuss it with them.
Thank you. Let's do John.
I think it's important to understand that we're bound by open meeting laws and other laws the school boards have. I, being on the board, have no more power than anybody that's listening to this or sitting here tonight. The only power that a board member has is when they act as a board. And it's important that we bring things to the table and talk about those. But no individual board member would be able to make a decision by themselves. With that being said, I think that I like the idea of meeting with parents. And we would have to. would have to, we would have to find out what the questions are in order to answer questions, if they're just general questions, person to person. But once we get into talking about making decisions, and we're on the record for making those decisions, then we would be held to those and then have to process that the proper way. So I think it's good to be open, but at the same time, we have to be careful that we're also following the law in the process of doing that. So I'm very open to any discussions or emails, questions like that.
Missy?
I guess one thing is, is that the Board of Education just approved that the meetings will now be virtual, right? They'll be streamed, correct? Am I wrong? That wasn't passed? Oh, okay. I mean, I'm sorry, I thought I heard that. I think that that would be a really good idea, allowing people to watch from home and learn what the board does. You know, a lot of times I think that people get, you know, things confused, that the board, that you as a board member have all this power and really you only have one vote. So if you really, truly believe in something, the way to get that across or, you know, a conversation started is to not only bring things to the table, but, you know, to start that discussion. And again, it's not always going to be everybody agrees, you know. Everybody has different things that they feel important. And I think that, you know, just making sure that that bridge is gapped between the parents, the teachers, and the school board and the superintendent. It's like a triangle. You know, we're all working together to make sure that the kids get the best possible education that they are coming to school for.
I agree with one of the initial things that Mr. Schnarr said, which is that I think we are a very transparent board. One of the things I like and appreciate, and the reason I'm still here after 15 years, is that we are a transparent board. We're not going around and pushing our own personal agendas behind the scenes. We have our discussions and our disagreements here in the open within, and to sort of piggyback off of something Mr. Panemianko said, you know, within the constraints of what we are permitted to talk about, I would rather talk about less than we're allowed to and not disclose anything that we shouldn't than to ever disclose any. I mean, I never would disclose anything about an individual student, a matter of personnel. You know, our students and teachers and our staff need to feel protected and, you know, that we are doing things in accordance with the law. You know, I'm not against the notion of virtual meetings, but I guess what I would say is we have, you know, every meeting is advertised. Typically, every board member is here at least 15 or 20 minutes early unless they have an agenda meeting right before they had to come in. So I would just continue to offer, and I've said it a number of times at meetings, that I encourage the public to attend. And it's great because sometimes things do need to be brought to our attention because it generates discussion with our superintendent about things. So, you know, I'm not against any of the things that anybody has said, but I do think we're actually doing a very good job of transparency.
Thank you. Please do. What initiatives would you support, whether current or new, to help students during these post-pandemic days? I'm going to start with Missy with this one.
All right. I think COVID changed a lot of people. I think COVID was eye-opening to a lot of people, or COVID taught people nothing. So we continue to see the adverse effects of people being in their house for a year and a half, kids, you know, playing video games more than ever, I think. You know, not like, again, not having children, I just see this, you know, per se from friends and stuff. I think initiatives that would be important to get kids more involved, correct? Is that what the question was?
What initiatives would you support to help students post-pandemic?
I think the school district is doing a great job by getting the navigators hired and trying to get kids that do need that extra support. I think some initiatives that I would like to see is kids going to the, you know, Bosse's Trade School a little bit more. I do know that, like, what I've seen is we don't have a lot of kids that graduate out of those programs, and I think that those are important, not only pushing, you know, not pushing kids, but helping kids go into those kind of programs not only lets them know that trade schools are all right and different things like that are all right instead of always having to worry about going to college. And I think that, you know, kids that sat home on computers and not in the classroom for two years, you know, the younger kids are, we have to worry about making sure the reading is up. I think that, you know, more reading programs like the LEAP program during school days would be great.
Great, thank you. Question next to Sean.
Thank you. I think in order to help students, you have to support, make sure that we're supporting the teachers, as I said earlier, to make sure that they have the support in the classroom so they can support those students, additional support. And then talking with the student councils to see how those students feel about what's going on with COVID and maybe something having to do with, "We survived. We did this." And where are all the positive things that have come out of that? I haven't been following, you know, what they're doing in the school with the curriculum per se pertaining to this, but off the top of my head, I would think of like a video or something like that, where it's a music video and they're dancing and they've got stuff in hallways and they're talking about what they did to get through COVID and how positive they are now, just keeping very positive throughout the process.
Great, thank you. Paul, would you like this one next?
You know, when we look at specifically initiatives, I continue to support a lot of the initiatives that we've implemented in the last couple of years with more counseling, more navigators. We've made advances with our IT. I think that's important, and I think it has perhaps opened up some ideas about, you know, how we're going to look at snow days in the future, let alone, you know, if, God forbid, we are put into another pandemic situation. Those are the things that help get us through. Our extracurricular activities, the sports, the music, the clubs, anything to get students engaged in school again, to give them, you know, motivation to be a part of it. You know, with those sort of things, you have to have certain grades to get there, which means you're going to have to focus on your education because you want to continue to be in the band or a football team or soccer team or whatever the case may be. So really, anything where, any initiative that's going to help students see the value of education, that your time at Jamestown Schools or in any school shouldn't be something that you're just trying to get through, that it's a means to unlock doors. And I think all of us, when things changed and things were taken away, we took for granted so many things and just the social aspects of school and being around other people and being in a classroom with your parents or with your teachers is so important. So, you know, just continue to get them in the buildings, to get them engaged, and help them through whatever they might be going through to try to recover from the effects of the pandemic.
Great, thank you. Missy?
Well, I can tell you to begin with when COVID ended, it took a while for me to get out of my pajamas. So I think we need to look at the kids and realize it took them a while to get back to where they should have been all along. I know that my two kindergarten and first grade students lost a lot of socializing, something that's very important for preschool and early elementary kids. There weren't play dates with other kids. There weren't group activities with other kids. So there were things they did not learn how to do because they didn't have the opportunity. So I think one of the initiatives that would help a lot is if we took some of our social workers and had them work with the K-3 population on those very simple social skills. It wouldn't take a lot, but some of it needs to be worked in. Another thing I think we forget is that our staff went through COVID too. It wasn't just our students. So perhaps we need to think about putting some support groups per building for our staff. They don't have to be complicated. They don't have to be rigid. They could be once a month with one of the social workers meeting with the staff to talk to them about, "How are you doing? How have the kids recovered? How are you working with the kids now? What was it like to come back into the classroom after you hadn't been there?" Because I'm sure it was very different to be in front of a computer screen instead of in front of a room full of kids. So, you know, there are things that I think we could begin to do that would help. Might not solve every problem, but I think you have to try things to find out what works and what doesn't.
Thank you.
We don't have too much more.
I saw him turn a page.
Oh, I have to say, our community really, really responded and submitted really great questions. So nationally and locally, morale seems to be at a very low point among staff and students. What can you bring as a board member to try and build morale across the district and the community, as this seems to be a very important task before all educators and community members, if I'm else I recall?
You know, I think a lot of the things that, as it relates to the pandemic question, I think in anything like that, when you're discussing morale, it's getting to the root of the problem with your staff and with your teachers. It's, I don't, you know, morale varies in any district and even from building to building is what I've found from being on the board. So I think as a board and, you know, working with Dr. Whitaker and the administration, you know, the first thing we have to do is ask ourselves, why is morale seemingly better here and not as great over there? And then we need to be asking our teachers that question, and we need to be talking to our teachers and staff about what's going on with students. So communication, I think, is the one word answer to what you do to improve morale. And you certainly have to be introspective and make sure that you're not part of the problem. That's probably the first question any of us need to ask ourselves is if, in fact, there is something we could be doing different or at least explaining why we're doing things the way that we are. You know, I think a lot of, and I dealt with this in my professional career, people are a lot more accepting of how things are when they understand why they are, why things are the way that they are.
Twenty more seconds.
A lot of times, that's the first thing you have to do is just let people know where you're coming from and, again, just communication is the biggest key to that and listening and asking yourselves, just what can we be doing better?
Chris?
I certainly agree with what Paul was saying. I think that we need to know, for example, that this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I hope that we've been doing a lot of things to show our appreciation for our teachers, and I hope our parents have been doing that. And I'll tell you one of the reasons I hope that is toward the end of last year, because it was during last year the kids got back into school, toward the end of the year when I went to pick up my two little ones, they were in two separate places. When the teacher came to bring the kids out to her, when the teacher brought the first one out, I walked up to her and I thanked her for everything she was doing, and I thanked her for giving me peace of mind about the education of my child and about the safety of my child, and I gave her a hug. I did the same thing with the other child's teacher, and in both instances, those teachers burst into tears, which told me that perhaps they weren't getting thanked enough. Now, it made me feel like I needed to run around the district and hug every teacher and say, "Thank you for what you're doing." That's not possible, but I think we need to find more ways to thank people for what they do.
Missy?
Ditto. I also agree that positive reinforcement and just that thank you are so important and the little things. We always get so stuck on this and that and this and that, and we forget about the little things. We forget about, you know, making sure that that teacher gets that thank you from the superintendent, from the board, from the principals, you know. One of the things that I think is so important is making sure that paras, teachers, custodians, and any staff members are listened to. And I think that that, if it's to the board, if it's to the superintendent, if it's to the principals, that they need to have their voices heard and not just pushed by the wayside. And I think, you know, if you have enthusiasm, it is infectious.
Thank you.
This was probably the number one topic when I went to get my petition signed, by people signing the petition. And it was all employees, and not just employees, people related to employees and so on, that there seems to be a real low right now in morale, lower than, those people are saying lower than I've ever seen. And I don't know if it has to do with COVID, or if it doesn't, I would probably think of doing a survey for all employees, the good and the bad, what's been going on in the last couple of years, how are you feeling, what are you doing with it? I think each individual person wants to be needed, respected, and listened to. And I can go back at the beginning of my career, after I became administrator, I rode a horse on opening in-service day and bounced a basketball against the teachers. And it was that kind of thing at the beginning of the year that everyone came together, and that's what we're working on, is morale. Have a cup of coffee, talk to each other. We weren't getting into scores on that day. I personally believe that's one of the worst things you can do in the beginning of the year in-service. But so there's things like that that I think can help to bring people around, especially after COVID.
Thank you. The next question we had submitted is metal detectors. I'll start with Missy. Metal detectors within our school buildings.
Metal detectors within the school. I think that, that's a very hard question because if you go to the airport, you have to go through a metal detector. If you go through the city hall building, you have to go through a metal detector. More children are bringing weapons and items that could harm people into our school district, and it's very concerning. I personally believe that it is something that the school district needs to seriously consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move next to John with this question.
First of all, I'm happy that we have the two resource officers and other officers working in buildings. I think that that's really critical and goes together with a metal detector. I have zero problem with the metal detector. The reason is, is because when I drop my grandchildren off to school, I want to know that the school's as safe as it can logically be at that moment, and then we can go from there. I don't know that we'll ever stop somebody that has a breakdown and tries to do something that would be outrageous to me, but we can only do the best we can, look at statistics, look at the professionals in the law enforcement field, and follow what they're telling us to do.
Thank you. Paul?
I'm against metal detectors in the buildings, and I will tell you why. If you look at historically, school shootings in this country, none of them would have been, only one of them that I can think of, would have been affected by a metal detector. none of them would have been, only one of them that I can think of would have been affected by a metal detector. These are situations where people are bringing high-powered rifles to the schools outside of the hours that the students are coming in. They're, when they have, whether, if a door isn't propped open, they're shooting their way through, as we saw most recently in Nashville. It doesn't mean I'm against improved measure, measures for our safety. And I feel, from what my understanding is of weapons detection systems, that that is a better, smarter route for us to be taking. I just, again, I, I look at the evidence, and it just, it doesn't hold up that for cost and effectiveness, that metal detectors would be the most effective way of preventing a tragedy in our schools. Now, I have always been in favor of as many officers or retired officers with a red shirt program being in schools and providing them with every tool and resource we can to make sure that they're ready to meet a crisis. Again, I just think, I want us to do some deeper research on the weapons detection systems. I think that is a better deterrent. People will get around metal detectors.
Twenty seconds.
If, if they know there is a single entrance that they need to conquer, they'll work around it. It's proven. So, you know, a door, a window can be left open and a gun can be handed in through a window. But you can't get that gun in the hallway if you have a weapons detection system.
Thank you.
This is something that I'm really on the fence about. And I'll, and I'll tell you why. Because I realize when most people start talking about metal detectors, it's because they hear about the mass shootings, and they think that metal detectors are going to stop that. They are not. If someone wants to come in and shoot up a school building, they're going to get in there one way or the other. They're going to shoot out a window or open a window or whatever they need to do to get in. So I think people just need to get it out of their heads that metal detectors are going to stop those things from happening. They are not going to stop it. What's much more effective is having red shirts and officers around. They're more of a deterrent to someone trying something like that when they see them there. On the other side of the coin, and this is why I'm on the fence, I think that sometimes, some kind of metal detection system, and I don't know that much about them, could stop a student from bringing something in in their backpack. Those are the kinds of things that are a little more worrisome to me. I know, and I'm sure most of you heard about it on the news, in Niagara Falls, there was a student, maybe it was Buffalo, someplace up there, there was a student who came to school with a gun. And because they had metal detectors, they got the gun before the student got into the building. What he intended to do with it, I have no idea. He may have just left it in his backpack all day. But in that instance, a weapon detection system worked. So there are two different issues here. We're talking, first of all, about stopping the mass horrible shootings. And God knows, those need to stop, and they need to stop now. Metal detectors aren't going to do that, but they may stop students from bringing weapons into school.
Thank you. Do you support the red shirts wearing a bulletproof vest while on duty with JPS? Are you aware that the district purchased bulletproof vests and they are not currently being worn by the red shirts? If so, do you know why? Paul?
I do support them wearing vests. I think there are situations where maybe they might elect to, I, I had a specific conversation with one of our red shirts who talked about taking students out during the lunch break for the, for the balance of their lunch and going out and, you know, playing softball or kickball with them. And, you know, these are all experienced officers, at least a lot of them are. If they had an outer vest on, they could pop it off and maybe they're a little more likely to, to do things. The only, the only debate I personally have over this is, is whether we should mandate that they wear them or give them their own discretion to make that choice. But 100% behind the idea. There's no, I, I don't see an argument for them not to be, at least, at least given the option to wear the vest.
Christine?
Feel the same way, they should be given the option to wear them. I honestly was not aware that we had them. But it's a good thing, and if someone wants to wear one, they should be able to do it. Again, I can't, I don't want us to mandate that to people. I think it should be their choice.
John?
I, I believe that they should wear their vests. I don't know that. I haven't had any discussion about this topic. I don't know that it should be mandated at this point. At some point, it might be decided that they do. But I'd have to have more discussion and talk to the individuals and find out what's the downside of not wearing it. I know they're used to wearing a vest when they go to work. And I know it can keep them safe in certain circumstances, but it also inhibits them in some ways. So I'd have to have more discussion on that.
I am also all for them, and I think that the option to wear them, if they choose to, is, is very important. I did also have a discussion with a red shirt, and, and he had told me that they actually have two options of bulletproof vests, one that goes underneath the shirt and one that goes over the shirt. So this person would prefer to wear one that goes over the shirt because it's the ability to unhook it if they needed to sit down. So I think that that is, it, it's, it's almost like, I guess in my head, it's almost like police officers on the street have the option, you know, if they wear them for their protection. And I feel that if red shirts aren't wearing them in a school and there's a potential weapon detection or a possible shooter, that if that person is not wearing that bulletproof vest, how much of a, of the ability for them to stand in front of a child or to be able to take that person down without that? I think that that puts that, that person holding the gun in a very bad situation.
Thank you. Do you feel that it is important that all buildings are up to safety standards? And in your opinion, do you think they currently are? If not, what do you think should be done to bring these buildings up to the safety standards? We'll start with Christine.
Oh, sure. I think that in most instances, our buildings are up to safety standards. It's been a priority of ours. We have the secure entrances in our buildings. Do I believe they're all here and really safe? I have to tell you, I don't. I don't think the high school is particularly safe because of the size of the building and the number of doors that go in and out. I, I'm not an expert at solutions, but I, I think that's a building that really needs to be looked at because I'm sure the kids could probably tell you what doors they can get in, even though we all think they're locked. So it's something that needs to be looked at. Otherwise, you know, I know most of our buildings have secure entrances, two doors. We're working hard on getting them all really secure. It's part of our capital project to do some other things that are safety issues. Yeah, I believe that we're doing our best to secure the buildings.
Thank you.
Now there are high school parents all over town.
I think generally, we're, we're doing a lot of good things, or we've done a lot of good things regarding safety standards. And specifically, you know, looking at the high school and the number of entrances. You look at what happened in Uvalde, Texas, where a door was left propped open. So, you know, we have alarm systems on our doors. There's, you know, we, we need to make sure that that's being monitored. We can't prevent, we don't want to, we certainly don't want to lock everybody into a building that size in the event that we do want to get people out in a hurry. That being said, we need to be aware of, you know, if, if people are, are leaving doors open. I, I would hope that what happened there opened a lot of eyes and, and more thought would be put into that about leaving a, a door open and unattended or even opening it at all. But you know, I don't, I don't think this is one of those questions that, or rather, I do think this is one of those questions that you should be constantly asking yourself. You know, are we doing everything for safety? You could never be satisfied. You know, anytime there's, there's an incident, be it large or small, you should ask yourself what, what could have been done better? What systems maybe should be improved? Do I think that we're doing a lot for safety? Yes, and I, and I know, you know, not just the safety in the sense that we've been talking about, but you know, the physical safety of, of the buildings. And, you know, we've, in our construction project, we're, you know, looking at staircases and railings and things like that that are going to be, you know, just improvements on buildings and grounds.
Twenty seconds.
We never stop looking at safety. I don't think you should ever stop looking at safety in every aspect.
John?
I think it's the most important, it's the most important topic in the district, obviously, safety of students, safety of staff, and also safety of buildings and, and building and grounds, as Paul's already indicated. I know there's educational law that says you're supposed to have fences, certain, certain heights and things like that. And I know the capital projects will be working on that. We always, I can always remember the fire department coming in and everyone trying to make sure that we were up to code and stuff like that. So I think the district has done a pretty darn good job of doing that. And I don't know the inner workings of all that, but from the position I was in until August, I thought we did a pretty, pretty good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, safety is definitely a number one concern of mine. Not only the building, but the outside of the building. One of, one of the biggest things that I've advocated for in the last several years is school zone safety. And currently, I think there is a grant that the mayor has gotten that is called Safer Streets for All. And he's in the process of figuring out how that, that can get to work. And, and I think that if the roads outside of the building are safer, that our buildings can become safer. Not only, you know, like, like, like several people have said, there's many doors in several of the buildings. I think the high school has like, what, 11 points of entry or close. I was trying to think of the building, it's been a long time since I've been truly there. But I, I think that that is, is something that the Safety and Security Meeting, or Committee that I'm currently on, we've had several discussions. We're meeting every two weeks on Mondays. And we're coming up with different solutions and different ideas, talking about which is best for each school. And I think that that's how it should be broken down, is what school needs what? You know, are we going to put a metal detection, you know, thing in, in an elementary school? You know, or are you going to put this in this school? You know, I, I think that once that committee can really get a, a handle on things and come to the board with some recommendations, I think that we'll be right there. Thank you.
Do you think it is important that the superintendent and high-level administration are also Jamestown residents? John?
No, I, I don't think that they need to be a resident of Jamestown per se. What's most important is that obviously they're pedigree. So that's what we try to look at. I think that's what the board's been looking at, to make sure that you have somebody that can handle that position. So I don't, I, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me necessarily if they're in the city or not in the city, as long as they're, they have the interest of the district in mind.
Thank you. Missy?
I, I agree and I disagree. I, I think that the superintendent should live in the district. The, the situation with Dr. Whitaker, because I did ask him the question of why he didn't live in the district. And, and unfortunately, in his situation, he moved here during COVID. And, and I think that him living close to the district is, is a good thing. You know, unfortunately, he doesn't live in the district. He can't vote for, you know, the school board or things like that. But one of the things that I think is very important, if the person doesn't live in the school district, that they just are available, you know, showing up to, to, you know, events and, and different things like that. I think that's more important than living in the district.
Christine?
Pretty much the same thing. I think their availability is more important than where they live. And up until a few years ago, we did require that the superintendent live in the district. But in discussion with the board, the board decided that it was adequate to require that the superintendent live in the county, which is what we did. We felt like that gave them several options for purchasing homes and so on. Other than that, I don't think upper-level administrators need to live in the district. But they, as everybody says, need to be available. If where they live is causing a problem in their availability, that's something for discussion with the individual. I've never seen it be a problem here before. I don't foresee it's going to be a problem in the future. So I think, I think we're okay with not requiring them live in the city.
Thank you. Paul?
You know, the interesting thing about this is that when we've gone through our last couple of superintendent selection processes, we did seek professional guidance in doing that. We engaged the services of consultants. And they strongly recommended to us and suggested to us that our pool of candidates would be severely limited if we, if we put such a strict limitation on the residency of our superintendent. You know, the board, the board directly performs two very important functions. One is hiring the superintendent, who is the person who is actually in charge of the district. And the other is, is engaging in the budget, which is the functionality of the district. So to echo what John said, what's most important is getting the best person, not limiting our pool, our pool of candidates when, when that time came. The compromise we came up with, you know, as Chris said, was that they have to be inch-tuck. We want them to be a part of the community. You know, the physical address was less important to us. And, and, you know, it certainly gave us a wide range of excellent candidates to choose from. And as far as our administrators, I feel the same way, you know. Would I, would I like for all of them to live in the city? Sure. But it's certainly more important that we have the best people as opposed to where their mail's going.
What is your opinion on staff personal behavior? Is it important for staff to be good role models for our students? And I'll start this with Missy.
Okay, so staff are different than teachers? Teachers are?
Oh, I would, I would think staff and company is all.
Staff is, is everybody.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's very important. I, I think that teacher, staff, all the way from, you know, the custodian to the superintendent, I think that, you know, their behavior, not only in school, is important, but, you know, outside the school. I mean, everybody's a person, you know? We all have our own lives, we all go out, you know? We, we hope that people act right in public. Sometimes you don't, sometimes you do. But you are who you work for. And I feel that if you're out and you're, you're, you're having a good time, you always have to have that in the back of your mind, that I am a Jamestown Public School board, or Jamestown Public School employee. And I think that that's very important. And it, and it will not only, you know, shrug off of me, but shrug, you know what I mean? Like, you, you are setting an example for what you want not only parents, but the kids to see.
Thank you. Christine?
I didn't look at you for a second. This is an interesting question. I mean, we can, we can let our staff know what our expectations are, certainly. But there are things we can't do. We can't infringe on somebody's right to free speech. We can't infringe on their rights to do many things. We can, however, if they do something illegal, take action on that. And, and we have. Sometimes that, that needs to happen. This is, this is a difficult question. I mean, if we're talking about, we're, we're going to tell all the men in the district they can't wear jeans to school, why? And that's something we can't do. If we were to tell, I don't, it's something we have to be careful with. As, as a board member and as a city board member, I would say that we As, as a board member and as a city board member, I would say that we do look at crime as a problem, whether it's in the school or outside of the school, okay? Because they are an example to others and to the students. But we have had instances of things that we know people have spoken about in public. And that's their right. They have every right to do that.
Thank you. John?
I believe that we should have high expectations for all staff, that their personal behavior is behavior as an employee. And I think that supersedes being a parent or being a homeowner if they're in the city. I think that's important. I think that all employees in the district should have an evaluation every year, which will help them to look at those things, if, if there are any concerns pertaining to their personal behavior. I think that students will look at that and their role models to those students that we talked about before. And they see them with a suit, a tip, a certain type of decor that they have as an employee, showing up on time, and answering questions, being polite, saying thank you and please. Maybe I'm old school, but I think that that stuff's still important.
Thank you. Paul?
You know, we have over 800 employees in the district, the last I knew. So you are going to have a lot of different personalities. But I do think, you know, you can set a reasonable bar for what you, for the kind of conduct that you expect from your employees. Generally, it is that we want people that our students can respect. And, and, you know, fortunately, state education law gives us a lot of guidance here. There are some things that we have to report, so we really don't have discretion. There are things that maybe that aren't reportable, but certainly those are the sort of things where I would expect, maybe there's some counseling going on within, you know, within individual buildings. Because, you know, as John said, we, we should, we should expect, or we should have high standards. This is, this is something very important that our, our staff is, is doing. And, and you know, the only thing I'll say is, you know, First Amendment freedom is limited in the sense that if you are out there representing yourself as a employee of this district, you, you become limited in the things that you can say. You can't say things that incite, you know, a riotous situation. Or you, you can't, you can't stand there as a representative of the district because then you are speaking for the district or you are proposing that you are speaking for the district. So, you know, I just, I almost want to put that out there as a, as a cautionary for whoever's listening. You know, we, I, I just think, you know, we use the law as our guide in this. But, you know, I, I hope that people are doing more than just the minimum.
13, 2019, JPS put millions of dollars into Rogers Elementary School, and it currently houses only a few staff members and some teacher training. What do you think the plan should be for Rogers Elementary? We're going to start with Paul.
You know, I wasn't, I was a cynic of, of what we were doing at Rogers when we were doing that. And, and I think part of what, how things got derailed over there was Dr. Abthor retired. So his plan wasn't seen through. I supported the decision to close Rogers as an elementary school when that was done. I certainly think there are a number of opportunities for repurposing that school. I know we use it for training. And I think, you know, I would ask Dr. Whitaker to continue to, you know, look, look at ideas of what we could do with that building. You know, unfortunately, long before any of us were here, there was an elementary school placed in, in a distance you could measure yards from the next elementary, measuring yards, you know, to the next elementary school. And, and the number of students there just didn't support keeping it open for what the expense was, especially in the times that we were going through when that decision was made. But, you know, it, it, it's a functional building. We should always be looking at what we could be doing there. And I would continue to listen to thoughts and options from, from both the administration and from the community.
John?
I was also in favor of it being the Success Academy at that time. I had worked with Tapestry prior to 2018, 19, for probably six years with Rachel Ludwig, a local person that was running Tapestry. And the discussion was, is having something like a social emotional mall there. And that was, I think, what Dr. Abthor was looking at, at, with the Success Academy. I think if everything's put in the proper order, it could still be something like that. But you have to get the state approval and you have to get the other people on the financial side that are going to get together that have an interest in seeing something like that work. And then talk with the superintendent and the other administrators to see if they can help the students that that was originally intended for.
Christine?
I, I was part of a board that decided to close the Success Academy. And that was done mainly because of finances. I mean, I knew that the 40 or 50 kids who were there benefited from being there. It was, it was helping them. It was keeping them active in school and moving them toward graduation. So if we were to look at opening something like that again, I think we'd have to look at the finances of it and look at the whole program very carefully. But I think with the number, what I, I said earlier about the number of young people here in Jamestown that don't have homes and that come from horrible family lives, to have something like that available to them would be a wonderful thing. Another option I think we could look at, and I'll give a disclaimer here and tell you all that I'm a member of the Erie Two Bowses Board. But someone mentioned earlier that perhaps some career education would be a wonderful thing. So I think Dr. Whitaker has some that we need to continue to look at, some partnering with Bowses to provide some programs in that building for career and technical education.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Sharps, for opening that up, because that was my idea that I said, or about the trade schools. I think that it's made me very sad when Rogers closed. Rogers was my alma mater. Went there from K, K through sixth grade. And I, I realized why the school's student body lessened because that whole area that that school is in actually is a lot of older people. So, so when that school closed and then nothing really came about it, I think it's a great opportunity for the district to look at it being a fantastic trade school or, or offering those programs because, you know, I mean, we have a, we have the BPU here. We have Cummins. We have the hospital. We have so many opportunities to, to reach out to these different places to try to get them involved. I think partnerships with different places around the community would be fantastic. We have a, we have a wonderful, you know, restaurant. You know, we have, we have restaurants in the area and we have no people with, you know, we don't have a lot of people with that, that waitress and that waiter experience. So we could actually do some kind of culinary thing. I know they do it at the Bowses program, but, but we have such a large number of students, you know? And one student from Jamestown graduated from that program two years ago. You know, I would like to see three or four, even five, you know, being able to, to go right into some kind of culinary job. You know, I think that that's very important. And also, another way to keep people in Jamestown is to trade, trade schools.
Thank you. I again want to reiterate, it's honestly an unusual thing. There's lack of family engagement in the district. We've always talked for years about how to get that. And we really thought we had a great response of the community coming up with questions. We've kept everyone here for over 90 minutes, so we just want to wrap up and ask each of you, you'll have two minutes to speak on anything that you feel may, that may have been missed in the questioning or anything that you'd like to say in closing. John?
First of all, I just thank you for this opportunity. I think it's a great democratic thing to have people get together and have discussion like this, especially in Jamestown. I love Jamestown. I went to school here. My son Michael went to school here. My dad went to school here. It's, it's just a wonderful place. And I'm looking forward to being on the board or helping the board in any way that I can. I'm just very grateful. Thank you.
Paul?
I want to thank the two of you, Joanne and Melissa, for being our moderators tonight. And, and my closing comments are just sort of notes I've made, so it'll sort of be chronological in the questions that you've asked. When I, when I think about being a board member, the, the topic of being a role model was, was brought up earlier. When it comes to being on the board, I don't worry about being a role model, or even as board president. I worry about the things that matter and I think if you're going to be on the board, you have to be prepared to, to sometimes make and support some unpopular decisions. You, you have to keep in mind that the reason that everybody's here, from, from the superintendent down to, you know, our lowest-paid employee, whoever that may be, and you were here for students. And that is number one. If, if you are here because you want to always be popular, then you're, or you want to be a role model, that's not good enough. I'm here because I care. I believe I, I make a difference in a positive way. It's why I've done it for 15 years and I'm looking for three more. And I just enjoy it. You know, I have hundreds of stories I could tell about the experiences I've had being on this board. And, and, you know, it, it's sort of a crescendo of, you know, how it all started with, with coaching a bunch of maniac five-year-olds and trying to get them pointing in the right direction with a soccer ball. You know, it's, it's, it's fun seeing kids succeed and, and I, and I enjoy being a part of that. And I think this is a very important role.
Thank you.
I too want to thank you, Mr. Decker. I know that it was a little bit of work to do those first questions and get them all ready to hear what we were doing this evening. I also want to thank the people who came to listen to the responses to those questions. I wish the room had more people in it. I'm not sure that, I'm sure that... I hope that the press covers this really well, so that the public gets to, gets to understand what we all stand for. And finally, I will say that I really, really wanted to continue on this board. And I think one thing I bring to it is my connection with Bowses, my connection with the area organization and my connection with the state organization. That gives me a lot of opportunities, a lot of information, and a lot of support that I can bring back to Jamestown as a board member.
Thank you.
Well, I also want to thank you guys. This has been a very unique experience for me. When I first thought that I wanted to run for the school board, at first I thought, oh my goodness, what am I thinking? But I started to come to the safety and security meetings and, and I came in, in this room and there was a bunch of tables and people were coming in and, and, and they were coming. They were, there was like 40 people the first night. And I was like, wow, you know, people really want to get involved. So I, I said to myself, I didn't give myself very much time to get the petition signed, but I did it. And I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try. I know I'm going up against two people that are already on the board and a gentleman that has been in the school district. You know, I think that I bring a very unique position to the board, not having any children. I think that one of the things that we didn't really talk about was recreation and sports. I think that sports in the schools are so important. I think that, you know, that relationship between a coach and a player is just as important as the teacher and, and a student. So, and if we can start to get more kids involved in sports and music, I mean, we have the, the band and we have all these sports teams. And I think that, you know, just the camaraderie of the school and all the fun, different things that the school is doing, I think it's great, the, the, the page that Kathy Padivanka was doing along with Cameron Hurst. I think that that is a, a huge tool for the community if they follow Jamestown Public Schools on Facebook. I think that it gives them not only that text message that's coming through and telling them, hey, you know, blah, 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 this is the fun part. This is where we are engaging the children. And I think that that's the most important thing and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was able to have a side power with John. And, and in light of the people who are here, I didn't know if the two of you would mind if we offered the, the, not the media. You all get to talk to us after if you want. If there's anyone here who maybe would like to speed round a couple of questions, maybe with us? Is there any, anything from, all right, well, that's good. I hate to think somebody came here, listened to this talk for an hour and 45 minutes. They deserve to, they deserve a question.
I thank everyone for coming. Like Christine says, I didn't thank the audience. I mean, it's nice to see people being involved. And again, I agree, we'd like to see more, but we value everyone that's here. Melissa and I wish to thank all, or wish all four of you luck next Tuesday in the election. We hope for a large turnout and that the budget is passed, which is probably more important than... I don't know. I, I'm not sure. That's a very important vote next Tuesday. And thank each and every one of you for volunteering your time. I don't know if people realize that being a school board member is 100% volunteer. There's no compensation and it is a thankless job. And we really thank each of you for wanting to better our children by being a school board member. So thank you.